All right.
All right, so the time now is six fifty eight. We're coming out of our executive session, coming back into our special session. So we are going to deal with the action items that I had discussed earlier, but they are the discussion on the charter amendment. So the first item to discuss is a possible charter amendment requiring voter approval prior to the establishment of any new fee on utility bill that not related to the utility services. And we were going to start with the presentation by the city administrator and the council has to ask questions. And then we'll move on to public comment. Following public comment, council, city council may discuss and deliberate on the items and make the motions desired. The chew up.
All right, thank you, Erin. If this should be somewhat familiar, we've been talking about it quite a bit lately. At your Y sixteenth meeting, you Masi introduced a session topic to introduce this concept of having voter approved requirements for new or something that came up in the budget committee process. It was also unanimously voted back to and talk about this. In order to refer a measure to the ballot, have some direction that by August fifth, we're going to make the November fourth deadline. So in talking about these, we basically three types of fees. We should be clear about what fees are in and what service fees, there's fees for specific services, and then there's impact. I know a lot of cities themselves, obviously, sees heads of increases, but so municipal service fees are revenues from utility customers for citywide services for safety, library, parks. We had a recreation fee for time because so for their on utility related fees for specific services, those that are tied to seeing on our ability bills as far as water sewer and suction based types of the last one, impact fees are those that they associate with elements and systems development charges and so we currently have a public safety fee chapter thirteen thirty simple code is adopted by ordinance. On financing was entered into twenty twenty one, there's approximately six million that service is both the principal and interest. There isn't question about that. Artization is about seven hundred fifty thousand. He is ten dollars and thirty cents a month for a loan unit. All that revenue goes to if you were repealed, that would be lose that source of revenue that's really significant to social services had obligation to repay this loan, so it would have to come seven hundred fifty thousand a year somewhere.
But we would not be able to get rid of the loan. Just for the record. Actually, just clarifying it for like the hundredth time.
Process. Well, there's I see it as three options. We can do nothing. I'm go on. Also, can and a ordinance that would go in our ordinance. Seed with this charter amendment and self impose this on there before another next. So could happen. Also, decision to
Is there additional staff or is that was that your
Need a copy of the resolution in here that actually I don't know.
There's a resolution that's drafted that in the event that the city council wanted to go forward and refer a measure to the voters to decide whether to require voter approval of new fees, you could pass that motion. Excuse me, you could pass, make a motion to pass that resolution. And then, once you pass that resolution, that gets filed with the city's election officer and the city attorney then drafts a ballot title to get submitted for the November fourth election. Another option, as John was saying, is you could just propose to adopt city code that would require voter approval prior to passing any new fees. That would be something that city council could pass. You wouldn't pass it in today's session because it's not prepared. But that type of ordinance, the city could prepare that ordinance and you could pass it at the next city council meeting. And that would be an ordinance that would have the same effect as a charter amendment. And the difference is, is that city council could amend that in the future, whereas a charter amendment, you would, the voters would need to amend it. But it does have the same impact. Or as Don said, you could, you could do nothing. And again, any, any new fees could still be discussed the way that you discuss new fees before. I think if there's any questions of John, you could ask that now or any questions of me. And it's open for discussion. Also, you can open it up to public comment and then come back and discuss after.
I think it will be, well, what's the consensus?
Sure. I have a question real quick about the difference between the ordinance and the resolution. The ordinance could be passed faster than a resolution, right? It takes longer. Isn't that another benefit of using ordinance?
So the resolution is would refer the measure to the voters and the voters would then have a say about whether or not they want to require voter approval for any new fees and that would then take effect at the November fourth election.
Okay, so the ordinance would just change our charter, restricting us from adding additional fees to the utility bill.
So the ordinance would just would change your city code, not your charter, because the only way to change a charter is through a vote of the people. So it would change your city code. It would put the same restriction on you so that you could just pass the city code and say voter approval is required for any new fees. And that would have the same impact. It's, it's just easier to modify, but it has the same impact.
Is that we could enforce it quicker. It could be implemented quicker.
It could be implemented quicker. It's effective thirty days from passage and then there is a restriction on city council that they could not pass any new fees with, without voter approval. So if the city wanted to pass a new fee next month, it would have to refer that fee to the voters.
Two years, I say in two years, though, whoever's on council at the time could say, we don't agree with that anymore and they could, they could get rid of that fairly easily, correct?
Well, it would be a political discussion. I mean, council would have to discuss it. And yes, then if everyone on council or if that majority on council voted, they could repeal that restriction that was put in place by this council. That's correct. It would. It's a city council action.
Or modify it. Some small tweak.
It is true that an ordinance is easier to modify. So if there is some unintended consequence from the ordinance, so it wasn't defining things clearly and maybe there were certain fees that were, was unclear or those getting swept into the restriction. Then you could modify it to make it more easier if it's an ordinance, a code amendment versus a charter amendment. Because if something was, if it was a charter amendment and it was unclear, you'd have to go back to the voters and say
Just change the charter.
To change the charter.
Once a year, remember they'd have a chance to change that.
Our elections officer isn't here today, but I believe there's, there's an election in May. And then, under the Secretary of State guidelines, it looked like there was potentially four options a year, but I think generally it's a May election and November election, at least are the most common.
Well, I'm, I'm not wild about ending the charter at all. The way it would pass is the just in case.
We could add the, I know one of the questions out there was, or one of the concerns out there was having a sunset to when we would stop the fees. We could add that to an ordinance.
Yes, and that's on the agenda for the next discussion.
Just want to make sure that that is something that we could do with an ordinance if we, if we end relatively easy.
Well, I think that you have a concern that I've heard. I see it both ways. I like the fast tracking of it and that she didn't have done expeditiously by changing the ordinance and making sure that all the options are in place that call out, you know, the exact purpose, how much the sunset clause in there as well. So people know exactly how much money, how long and if they get a voice. You know, the only thing that I've, I've heard echoed a lot is the fact that there's a distrust in government currently, right? And the fact that the charter makes that more solidified in the voters' hands. There is the other piece of it that that's a huge political move. The council has to sit up here and repeal an ordinance to change or modify the, any type of fee. So there's that aspect of it that is I mean, that would become the great undertaking, right? They're serious ones. So there's that piece of it.
Yeah, I mean, that makes the ordinance pretty serious. I don't know if we need to take it to the, the level of resolution.
Question. There, there would be no issue to hypothetically do both, right? So like start out with modifying the ordinance and then like seeing what that generates, right? If people were in support of that, if that, that satisfies people, if they are going to get, you know, their voice heard and they're going to choose it. And then we can always change direction if that's really not, you know, that satisfies the citizens. We could use something different.
That's my thought is it gives us a few months to test the waters and kind of see, see how it goes before something more final.
Well, and then on top of that, that even if we made all of these modifications and we did the resolution and said there's still a chance that you know, that's going to change with, without our thoughts.
Do we know any status on the citizen petition? Update? Did we, did we get an update on that? Cause I was understanding everything had to be done. Signatures validated everything back with Kathy. In two days.
My, my understanding is because I think that the, there is some literature out there that's unclear, but my, my understanding is that the city has to receive all of the signatures by August sixth and then the county has thirty days to verify the signatures. And I know that that's different than in one piece of, one manual, it says something different. That all the signatures have to be verified by the ninetieth day. But I, my understanding is that if the signatures, the quantity of signatures is submitted to the city by ninety days in advance. So that's August sixth, I believe. Then the city election official would submit that to the county to start verifying the signatures. And if there are not sufficient signatures verified, it would not be eligible.
So I had a very different conversation with Don in the county election office. So I'll just tell you what he said, and I don't know what's actually true. I was told when I went and had to face the case group that, that the signatures had to come to Kathy. Kathy had to validate that there is this need to qualify, right? And then that's when the thirty day actual start. Then those signatures got tendered over to him, who would then validate all of those signatures. All of those validations and basically a certificate of compliance or whatever you want to call it, then had to be done and brought over here by at six. So that was the direct conversation that he had with me.
Okay, so, well, what I would say is that on August sixth, if the signatures are brought in, you know, it sounds it's for the county to determine whether or not, it, it's for the county to determine whether or not it's eligible.
It would be nice in the future for that. Like, I know, because it's been like a circus. I'm trying to get the information out there and what we actually have to have, but we'll have, this is a learning opportunity. We sure on what we actually have. Okay. So can we take public, does everybody agree with us to take public comment now and see if there's anything else that's worth some position? So is there anybody online? Do we have any public comment whatsoever?
There's a, I think the addition of public comment was a little late. Um, okay, Council Hubbard, I've heard from you, yes.
The big question, right? In my opinion, is like the only way to, what's the term, referendum? The only way to combat the, you know, another option for the elimination of the public safety fee would be to counteract that, but we can do that anytime if in fact that was going to go forward, right? Would we still have to take, we can actually put something on sooner at a later date, so we're not having to go through the same process with
Especially because we already have the resolution drawn up.
So we could put a counter argument or another option on the ballot, right?
Yes, at any time the city can refer a measure to the voters at any time during a citywide election. So if the city wanted to move forward with an ordinance, it could do so and pass an ordinance that says voter approval is required for any fees on the utility bill unrelated to utility services, it can just do that. And then in this bay, if it, if he decides that that wasn't sufficient and people say, well, we really want to have it be a charter amendment, you can move forward there.
I meant like for if the fact that if there was enough signatures and there was going to be something on the ballot this November from the citizen petition. Are we going to lose an opportunity to get something on the ballot?
So, okay, so the, no, not, potentially not. The process is if if a petition is submitted on August sixth, it goes to the, well, if it goes, if it's eligible to be put on, based on what the county says. Or either way, the city then at its next regular session meeting has a city council meeting to review the citizen petition. And the city can decide either to accept the citizen petition or provide its counter petition. So at that time, you could propose this counter measure for the citizens to vote on or third, not propose a counter measure, but just let it go to the voters, refer it to the voters. Thank you.
Make sure we have another opportunity.
Yeah, if in fact we needed to, otherwise we would just pass that. And then they'll, they can try again if it's not too forward. Public comment, so. So then it comes down to, we need to make a motion on whether we want to do the ordinance, modify the ordinance.
Right? You could make a motion or you could not do anything. If you wanted to move forward with either the resolution or the, or a city ordinance, you could make a motion. Well, if you want to move forward with the ordinance, you could make a motion directing staff to preparing ordinance for the city. It's not prepared that they can be prepared for the next city council.
The time limit is August fifteenth deadline to get on the November.
Right.
That's perfect.
So we're not, we wouldn't be able, well, we wouldn't need to get it on the ballot.
You're just changing the code. So an ordinance doesn't, it's not.
Sometimes it's not of the essence. We're only in a time of the essence situation if we're going to modify that way. Uh, the children. Yep. So we need to decide whether we're going to do charter or ordinance.
Well, I'll make a motion. You guys can just decide how you feel about it from there. I'm going to make a motion that we move forward with putting together an ordinance and moving forward with an ordinance.
That has the same elements of the trust as it works with the, the same provisions, right? As far as the monetary.
Yeah, let's see. Do you could make a motion directing staff to prepare an ordinance to update the city code to request, to require voter approval before any new fees are established or increased on the utility bill unrelated to utility service. Very long motion stated. Yeah, you could say it stated.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Hold that as stated.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion?
Sunset.
She, she said that. I think she said that with all those words.
Well, I didn't, because we're going to talk about that next. So you can make a motion on that at the next.
Um, I want to be clear that what we're talking about for the ordinance and directing staff, it would still have the elements of, it has to be used for whatever the purpose was. It has the monetary amount. It can't be modified without a vote and there'd be a sunset clause.
And we wouldn't, it would only apply to new.
Everything that's in here, except for the fact that if the existing, we wanted to modify that, then we would need to, it's like the, the way the charters, right? It's like specify the maximum amount of the fee or the rate include that expiration date or less reauthorized by the voters, date the specific purpose for what the revenue is to use. And the one that's not public safety fee or any existing could be modified without the approval at that point. You couldn't change ten dollars and thirty cents to ten dollars.
That's right.
That makes sense.
I'm looking at Russ to see if he's understanding that.
So, okay, let me see if I can re-articulate.
What Masi stated was straightforward or exactly what I'm thinking.
Yeah, it's right here on page. Maybe this would be helpful. What page is this? On page, the back of page ten. If, if maybe we looked at this, it would be helpful where it says that two thousand twelve to the charter that the back here, the voter approval required from municipal services fees unrelated to the utility service. This right here is basically the corrupt. So it's a whole thing, right?
Okay, yeah. So how about I'm going to write this motion and I'm going to just reference exhibit A. And that'll, that could help if that's exhibit A plus the sunset clause. The sunset clause isn't stated there because we're going to discuss it later, but if you
It does. It says the expiration date.
CB, yeah, CB.
We added it. Oh, I thought you were referring to the public safety fees.
About the, the, the ordinance.
Okay.
The only time that it wouldn't go up for a vote is if in fact we as a council and some other councils at the time wanted to do this.
Just what B is.
And this is but it also protects the current fee from any type of new one. We just like to buy the committee, like making it ten dollars and thirty one cents to do that.
Why do you keep looking at me? Cause I feel like I'm not.
You are, I understand.
I feel like I'm like not.
Okay, so I got it. I, I understand it. Here's a motion. Okay. See if you can read my person. Okay. I'll make a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to require voter approval for any new fees, increase fees or change of purpose on.
Real quick, we had a motion a second before. Do we need to do anything?
We had a second.
Yeah, we did.
We did have a second. Oh, yeah, we're going to kill it then.
Okay, so we had a motion a second. Counselor sending.
No.
Counselor Gerson, Counselor Hubbard, thank you, Counselor sending because on track and I'm a no as well.
That's it.
Purpose.
You want to read it and we'll just say I stated.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to require voter approval for any new fees, increase fees or change of purpose as outlined on item number three. Exhibit A of the council agenda.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional conversation?
You know, this is a good place to start. Whether it's, it's enough, I think is to be determined, but I think it's a good starting point.
They just, just do it. Okay. Any other comments?
Thoughts? Okay, Counselor Gerson.
I still am like, again, a little bit.
Well, I was just going to say that I, I mean, it's either going to be helpful or it's not going to be helpful. I have never been a fan of adding fees to the utility bill, but with the frozen tax rates that we have, I mean, in the state of Oregon, realistically, I, we have to do what we have to do to provide services and try not and praying to not make it cost too much and trying to provide the services that the people that live in a town of fifteen thousand people expect. You know, when you come to a town like this, you expect twenty four hour policing, you expect parks to be clean and sanitary and stuff, and those all come with a price.
That's it. Pretty good, I'd say. Um, I think that, so I'm still a bit torn on the charter piece. I, I'm hoping that this is going to be enough to show good measure for citizens, because I think there has been a lack of trust for government. It feels like people are slighted a bit about the police station and, you know, not going out for a vote. I also think that maybe some onus is on like us as council and the city on doing a better job communicating. Like, you know, really getting things out there more about like where we are at and the struggles and that type of information. There's so much misinformation out there. It's like it's kind of dizzying. I think we could do a better job at, at maybe getting more aggressive on providing information to people. And I also want to make sure that for me, if we're going to go this route with an ordinance, which I think is a good start, that we're prepared to do a referendum on, I think that's the right term, in November, if in fact we, we do have the citizen petition in front of us. So If in fact we, we do have the citizen petition in front of us, so we're gonna have to be prepared to, you know, go that route. I think this is a good step, showing good faith and that we're listening and hearing the voters and the citizens. But if there is a time that we need to, you know, increase or not increase, yeah, increase an existing fee or need to go out for a fee, I hope this goes both ways, right? So that we are then earning the citizen's trust and we're able to produce information to them to help them, you know, support and partner with things we're trying to do with the services that are essentially the stuff that we've been, so. So we have a motion, we have a second. Councillor Gunderson, and I'm an I as well. All right, so that takes us to our um, second item, which is discussion on the sunset of the public safety fee provision. So this is the existing. Um, so possible sunset provision on the public safety fee, we're gonna start with a presentation from city administrator, um, and then we can ask questions. Deliberate, if we have any public comment at that time, we can figure it out.
All right, thank you. Most of this should be fairly familiar by now, but public safety fee is in chapter thirteen, or municipal code. Adopted the, the thirty year bond. Strike the new police station.
Hold on, just for the record, you said twenty fifty-two, so that's the expiration date, you said seven hundred and fifty thousand approximately, thirty year, and that is that is actual interest and principal, correct? For the record, is there committed information out there? Okay.
You have ten dollars and thirty cents per dwelling unit. Some of those fees rented, then it's paid with the financing costs. This fee is critical, being this thing committed to the refund of weight project. He obviously loses that source of revenue though. That's to essential services. Once the debt services paid off, the As I was proposed.
Just to be clear, we're at what, approximately seven percent of our reserves right now, right? Yeah, and twenty percent is how that can like fall as a policy guideline of this. And just for clarity, how's come, how much do we have in those lots that is sitting there?
And then while opposing, um
And if we're passing the, the ordinance simultaneously, that's gonna cover any modifications to this current uh thirteen thirty public safety fee, that that will be covered, right? So it's just literally adding the sunset for the transparency of that services and add.
I thought there was a sunset all along, so maybe it just this is just like making it more structured, I, the way that it was proposed to me all those years ago, there was always a sunset.
Well, it's not in, that's the problem, it's not in there, so nobody actually knows how much money that we actually like. There was John just says, the twenty, what did you say, twenty fifty-two? Yeah, that's when, that's when, so the date that we should be done with this. The citizens know.
Again, it's that trust, right? Not trusting.
Yeah, I think it, well, for me personally, I think it adds a level of transparency. Here's the amount that we have, this is the purpose that it's going for, this is how much it is, and then this is when it's in the sunset. Well, really, I think.
This is even still an if, because we have to build it, right? So is there still a question about, I mean, can we, can we firmly stand beside this? What if something happens? I just want to make sure if we're saying that this is the, the end date, if something happens, is there a chance that this date could be incorrect? If that would just, it's, that would expedite the process. So that would shorten it. Okay, I just want to make sure there's not any chances of it.
That's rate of timing and refunding.
I think the thing that will help is once we get, we'll, we do it in October, that, you know, when we actually start breaking ground and we stop paying the fees and fines that we're gonna be building. Um, but I think it's going to help, cause this is the, like, epitome of the, one of those hospital scenarios that we could always talk about. I'm very excited um to, you know, see a sign out there that says, we call the, the same as league department, and people can actually see some tangible result for where their money has been going the last two years. Like now there's gonna be actually something there versus just paying it every Yeah, so I'm really excited about it, and I would be just as excited if it was we had been charging money for a library or a sports complex or any type of other thing, like it doesn't matter, we've been charging people money for the specific purpose, and it, yeah, nothing to show for it, it was, I mean, how that tide is turning. October, I guess this is gonna be a huge celebration that we're actually getting this across the finish line. Like, that would be, that would be great to get at least started. I didn't track there, but still, so, the whole thing is to add these sunset costs. And I don't know what that looks like, Ashley, is that, I mean, is it just adding these year twenty fifty-two too late? So, that's when.
Uh, so, uh, I don't know if people can see, I know that council can see a proposed uh text for a sunset clause. That's one option, and this is an option that many cities use when they adopt a public safety fee for a specific purpose, then they have a date um certain, that they know that uh the public safety fee will no longer be charged. Um, there's other ways to do it, you could say until the, the, this particular bond is paid off, um, that gives it's less certainty, um, but that's another way you could do it also. Uh, this is just has a certain date, and, and again, this was, uh, the bond financing was a, is a thirty year bond financing, kind of like a thirty year mortgage. When you buy your house, you have a thirty year mortgage on it, and you're paying principal and interest, it's really similar, and this is the date that the um mortgage or the financing matures.
I like the date, instead of just saying until it's paid off, I think the date's a bit clearer for people to understand.
Yeah, and since we don't have an actual date, like, if you, what, December thirty first? Twenty, twenty fifty-two?
At least it's something.
Yeah, that's what I Councillor Hubbard, what do you think?
I'm still gonna be
Are you okay with that? All right. That looks like she's writing some personal.
Who wants to take a chance at reason?
Sunday, it's your turn.
Should I give a quick reminder to speak up if you've got a message that they're having a hard time here?
Is there any public comment?
Yeah, is, is there, yeah, is there anybody that has any public moment?
So is your sorry?
It's not, not my sorry, that wasn't mine, that was definitely yours.
It was in like hyperspeed too, I don't think I've ever heard sorry.
Cause that's how I talk.
All right, I make a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to add a sunset clause to the public safety fee.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Sorry, councillor Sunday. Um, councillor Hubbard. Councillor Gunderson, and I'm an I as well. Yeah, all right, so that takes us on to um other business. Does anybody have any other business? I had a couple of things that I would like to see if you can throw over onto the uh twentieth, the meeting on the twentieth. Now that I can participate in budget discussions, cause nine eighty-three passed, um, I have questions that I'm maybe back into the, uh, what the budget committee um wanted to do for fees on the event and things like that. Um, what does that look like? How do we, how do we incorporate that? What does that entail? How do we facilitate that? Do contractors know that? They do, okay, so if we can have many of the sessions, John can be trusted to go on a note for a follow-up on that, and if it's just Halloween town, if it's just our contractors, what does that look like? And then also, uh, touching base on any type of permits, if there was some stuff that came in on permitting, and maybe an idea of how permits to recap, permits on. If we're, what we actually do for the event there, if we're shutting down the streets, roads, or I don't know, just, we're getting, we're getting them now, like some questions on them, and I think it'd be nice to have a little explanation of that permitting process and
For events?
Yeah, and it should be tied, well, the fee should be tied correctly, wrong, should the fees be tied to some type of universal fee schedule that we have, Ashley? Already, something of the sort, like if we're doing some type of fees.
The fee be, the fees are generally tied to some sort of regulation, but maybe um it'd probably be good for John, you could just provide an update on what the fees are and
I've been talking a quick way about the surcharge and what that looks like, what's
And does that include everybody? So doesn't that include, include like, I've just, or does that include like, what administrative things or? I'm getting questions that I don't know the answers to, just generally, overall.
So agenda item to discuss, just give background about fees and permits.
Yes, and who it pertains to, cause I think there's some ambiguity out there that we could, we could do a better job of making sure that we know who is that, if it doesn't. Um, and then I also want to put on the agenda on, people, where we're at with any type of HR. Uh, it's been on topic for a while, making sure that we can get some additional help if we can, for some help for our uh city reporter and deputy reporter, um, that's close to the HR piece, and then also diving back into all of the um evaluations, where we're at with that, with the directors, I don't want that to fall, that to be so. We can, and it's just an update on that, that'd be great, so there's Anything, anybody have anything else?
I don't know if we can really talk about things.
On the agenda for the twentieth? Any other topics? All right, if we don't have anything else, we're gonna adjourn this meeting, so it is seven forty-one and the special session is adjourned.
How many people are online, Kathy?